Most of these planet-saving changes can be done and made likely won't cost you anything, and in fact, could probably save your parents' money.
Do one thing!
How can one person do one thing?
Also could have an impact on saving the planet.
Do one thing!
And little things can make a big difference. And as individuals, we each have the power to make small changes every day. Hashtag #DoOneThing!
Do one thing!
I invite you to make a personal commitment today. We challenge every adult and child to join us. We have many ideas, or you can make up one of your own.
Do one thing!
If you save every instant and quit aquatic every day by turning the tap up and brushing your teeth, and letting friends to do the same, and turn their family or friends to get the same in a short amount of time by...
Working together, you would save thousands of gallons of water, all by making a small change in your daily routine.
Which didn't cost you a thing.
Saved you money, and of course, saved you precious drinking water.
Do one thing!
Some other ideas.
I can recycle my body, Bob.
I can put my rubbish in a right bin.
Do one thing!
I can take a shorter shower.
I can recycle plastic bags.
I can put my sack into a reusable container.
Do one thing!
I can start composting at my house.
I can turn off the TV when no one is watching.
Do one thing!
During winter, I can open curtains of glass to let in any sunshine, and close them in the evening to keep them lit.
I can save computer paper by printing on both sides.
I can turn off the lights when I leave the room.
I can use pasta straws.
Do one thing!
We are recycling as much as we can, but we know that recycling is not the real solution. Over ninety percent of the plastic ever made has not been recycled. Instead, it ends up in landfills, the environment, or releasing toxic pollutions. We cannot simply recycle our way through this crisis.
Do one thing!
We are asking you to make a commitment to do one thing.
Do one thing!
Thank you for helping!
Do one thing!
Center School in Long Meadow won second place in the Northeast Region of the Trex Challenge with 5,207 pounds. Congratulations!
It's seven o'clock. I'm super ready.
Mr. Town Clerk, can I see, uh, threshold reach fifty?
Uh, I'm not sure of that. I gotta check these out.
Do you see fifty people?
I see... Indexes.
I see fifty.
A lot more than that.
Yeah, okay, good. Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that we have met the quorum of fifty people at last count. I declare the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to be in session. Is this better? To honor the work that our service members do for our country every day, our invocation will be read by a longtime resident, Army veteran, and member of the Long Meadow American Legion Post 175, Jeff Minardi, who raised his children here and was an active leader in Boy Scout Troop 90, a former scout master.
Thank you for bestowing this honor upon me. We've come together in civic assembly as a community in a tradition older than the Commonwealth itself. We've come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate our position, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is immense gap between saying I'm right and believing I'm right. And our neighbors whom we disagree with are good people with hopes and dreams as high and true as our own. And in the end, caring for each other as a community is of far greater importance than the differences we may have, so may it be.
Thank you. I welcome the Long Meadow Color Guard. Begin their procession. Benjamin Canoira, Senior at LHS and a member of the National Honor Society, two-year wrestling champion and captain, and who placed fifth in D2 states, will attend Valley Forge Military College as part of their early commissioning program where he received a four-year ROTC scholarship, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And thank you for all who are able to rise. I now turn it over to Mr. Canoira. After that, we will have a moment of silence. Please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. The national anthem "Star Spangled Banner" shall now be performed by E. Kent Torry of LHS. Thank you to them and to Kayla Worland, their teacher. Appreciate it. Thank you to our color guard. I welcome you to town meeting, our town's legislative body. To any first-time voters and to our visitors, I bid you a special welcome. As a local legislature, there's some traditions that may be unusual to you, and we'll explain them as we go along. One of the important roles of town meeting is bringing its community together, and that's something that this ceremonial stuff does. We'll have some awards and recognitions, which we'll get to in a moment, followed by some housekeeping matters and rules. We also come together in this civic space to remember those who we have lost. On the screen, there is a list of those folks who gave us the... all of that they offered and served the community in various ways. In the school department, Judith Ebeling, Director of Art at LHS, Sarah A. Sally Harrelson, teacher at LHS, Judith A. Flaherty, teacher, Catherine Z. Wiseman, Spanish teacher and student support, Beatrice Marie B. Murphy, secretary at Glenbrook. In the library and also at the Adult Center, Irene Buran. Historic District Commission, Hertha M. E. Platzer. Long Meadow Adult Center Meals on Wheels, Catherine Sheehan. Town volunteer Maria Staggs. And finally, kindly remember Garrett Holt, Fire Department EMT intern, Cadet EMT in Summers, Connecticut, and LHS Senior. Take a moment to remember these folks, please. We honor their memory. Thank you. I now turn it over to Chair of the Select Board, Tom LaCusa, for the award ceremony.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to award the Citizen of the Year Individual and Group Awards. Now, last year, a Citizen Commendation Award was given out at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, and there were no awards for Citizen of the Year, which involves the person's name being put on a plaque that's in Town Hall. Early in 2024, the Select Board voted to amend the Citizen of the Year policy, and the Citizen Commendation Award was removed. The new policy clarifies the Citizen of the Year Award and includes both an individual and group award. This year, seven nominations were received, and we thank everyone for their submissions because it's important that people submit nominations. Tonight's award winners received multiple nominations. The individual award for Citizen of the Year is given to recognize a Long Meadow citizen who through their personal involvement, leadership abilities, and selfless giving of their time and talent, has positively affected Long Meadow and the lives of its citizens. The Citizen of the Year Award is presented to a citizen who exemplifies distinguished volunteer service to the town of Long Meadow and the community, either through lifetime service or through specific act or acts in the previous twelve months. For 2023, I am pleased to announce the Citizen of the Year Award for Individual is presented to Mary Beth Bergeron. A commonality in the nominations received from Mary Beth were her tireless years of working to make the new Adult Center a reality, her continued work in private nonprofit benefiting the program of the Adult Center, and her work preparing and delivering meals for residents on weekends and holidays. Congratulations, Mary Beth. We have a certificate for you. I know she's a little shy. She's not shy when it comes to doing work, though. But, uh, all right. And then we have a group award for Citizen of the Year, and it's awarded to a group of individuals who perform an exceptional act or service wherein their contributions, performances, and achievements provide exceptional benefits to the town of Long Meadow, either through continuing work or specific act or acts in the previous twelve months. The 2023 Citizen of the Year Group Award is presented to co-presidents Diane Portfilio, Megan Downey, and the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow. All right. The multiple nominations received for the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, aka SEAL, all noted the tremendous work for the entire community by serving all families and children with special education needs. SEAL hosts events, provides networking opportunities for families, and communication and education. Of the 2,100 students in Long Meadow, over 500 of them have individualized education plans, and SEAL aims to help all these students, their families, and more. Congratulations, Megan, and the entire Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow.
Is that her? Is that her? Tom, I think she's here. Oh, Tom, she's here. Tom, she's here. She's here. Is that... is that you? Is that you? Come forward, please. We have a certificate for you. Congratulations! Thank you so much. Some general housekeeping rules to mention before we deliberate and vote on the warrant articles. You know where the emergency exits are in the back and in the front. If you need a hearing assistive device, let one of the volunteers know. Visitors sit in the visitors section. Children may sit with a parent or guardian. And we have not had any non-voters who received prior permission to speak, with the exception of the superintendent of schools and any department head or directors speaking on matters related to their departments. So the back of the warrant includes the rules of procedure. I am not going to read all of them, and I imagine you may not have either. But if you want something to do, you can go ahead and do that. If anybody is out of line, I'll let you know what's going on. The short stuff, all remarks are addressed to me, the moderator. We speak for ourselves. And, oh, a big one. You have a list of articles. We don't vote necessarily on the articles. We vote on the motions that people make, the things that we say orally. You will note tonight that there are going to be some motions that differ slightly from the article, and I will draw your attention when this is the case. As long as it's within the scope, I allow for that motion to be slightly different. Some articles require a two-thirds vote, some require a four-fifths. I'll let you know. Uh, let's see. We are using electronic voting devices for the sixth time at this meeting, and I'll explain the procedures. Make sure you keep them on you. Do not give them to anyone else. If you have to use the restroom, bring it with you. At the end of the meeting, put it back in the plastic bag that it came in and put it in one of the red barrels. Let's see. We're gonna do some sample voting, just to make sure that you're familiar with how things go. When I announce the vote is now open, you're gonna press one for yes and two for no. If you notice anything amiss with your device during these tests, please let me or one of the volunteers in your area know. You're gonna have twenty seconds from the time I announce the vote is now open. Are you ready? All right, so test vote. Was the weather perfect today, or what? Press one for yes, press two for no. The vote is now open. Five seconds? Five seconds left. And the vote is closed. With... where's the 185? Yes, 28 said no. The ayes have it. Okay, now for something slightly more controversial. Ready? Test voting. Sometimes pizza should have pineapple. Does it belong on pizza? Usually. Press one for yes, press two for no. The vote is now open. How we doing? Five seconds left. Vote is now closed. Ooh, the noes have it. 148. Fifty-six yes, 148 no. So clearly, you know how to use these devices. If at any point you have a question, please let me know. We will now turn to Article One. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to choose three trustees, Francis Miffett, William McGurk, and Aaron Kobler, to administer the William Goldworth Bequest.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
The Goldworth Bequest is an endowment fund left to the town of Long Meadow for assistance to the worthy poor of Long Meadow. The Board of Trustees administers this fund and makes expenditures from an accruing interest for applicants experiencing financial hardship. The trustees are chosen annually by town meeting.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. Press one for yes, press two for no. The vote is now open. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. Two oh five, yes. Seven, no. Motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Okay. Article Two.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $760.91 from available funds in the Treasury for the purpose of paying prior year's bills.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
It was discovered after the town closed its fiscal year 2023 financial records that certain commitments involving printing services remained outstanding. This appropriation will allow the town to make good on those commitments.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This article is...
Could you please, please, please use the microphone? Thank you so much.
The Finance Committee recommends Article Two.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a four-fifths majority. The voting is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With two oh seven, yes, to eleven, no. Motion passes with a four-fifths vote. Affirmative. Article Three. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to fix the fiscal year 2025 salary and compensation of the moderator at $1,000 and select persons at $2,000 each to provide for a reserve fund and to approve the fiscal year 2025 operating budget totaling of $83,310,695 and itemized as follows. General Government: $2,043,329. Public Safety: $6,350,000.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What's the amount? I...
Oh, the amount? For which one?
Public Safety?
Yes. Public Safety is $6,305,474. Planning and Community Development: $392,804. Department of Public Works General Fund is $5,796,714. Community and Cultural Services: $1,932,40. Debt Service and the Town, School, Employee Retirement Benefits: $195,4891. Subtotal for the General Fund is $75,588,900. Water Enterprise is $3,908,124. Release Funds for the Wage Settlement Account...
Excuse me, Mr. LaCusa? Sewer Enterprise?
Oh, wait. Here we go. These... I don't know how they print it out wrong. Excuse me. For General Town Government, I have Computer Replacement...
I'm sorry, Mr. LaCusa? Could you read the Sewer Enterprise number, please?
Yes, I did. I read it. It was, uh...
No, you...
Oh, Water Enterprise...
Mr. LaCusa?
I don't know. Yeah. Okay. Here we go. Sorry. I have to apologize. I didn't receive these... this list of things until this morning. So Sewer Enterprise: $2,468,209... No, $902. And then Stormwater Enterprise is $1,344,769. For a total, as mentioned before, of $83,310,695. And to add the general operating budget of... And, yes?
And to fund the general?
Yes. And to fund the general operating budget of $75,588,900, be raised and appropriated as follows. $75,588,900 from the general taxation. And to the fund of the Water Enterprise Fund, $3,908,124, be raised and appropriated as follows. $3,908,124 from water receipts, and to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund... And to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund, Be raised and appropriated as follows. from sewer receipts. And to fund the Stormwater Enterprise,
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Did you mean 769?
I did mean that. Yes. be raised and appropriated as follows. from Stormwater Receipts.
I'm sorry? Did you mean 792?
from Stormwater. And receipts from from general taxation.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. LaCusa.
The annual operating budget must be adopted and funded for fiscal year 2025 that begins January 1, 2024. The Select Board's budget was reviewed and recommended by the Finance Committee as required by the Town Charter. The Select Board's budget, as printed, is a balanced budget as required by Massachusetts General laws and the Charter. The Select Board's proposed budget is $83,310,695. And the Finance Director will only release funds from the Wage Settlement Account to the proper budgetary line items upon notification from the Town Manager of the wage adjustments allotted and ramifications of the collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, please? Ms. Wida?
Article 3 is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yep. You may come forward. Name and address, please?
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. So as mentioned, I'd like to talk a little bit about the DPW budget and the number you saw there.
And just out of clar- just for everyone's sake, we have the microphones color-coded. Red for those who are opposed, green for those who are in favor, and yellow for those who have questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea.
So the actual DPW budget is 8.8 million on page 19. It is 24% of the total town budget excluding schools. The DPW impacts every citizen every day. Buildings, including schools, fields, and parks, roads, water, and sewer. Last year, we paid a third party $100,000 to restore the overgrown landscape at our 10-year-old $45 million school. This year, it's $75,000 for field leveling and planting grass. So Wolf Swamp Fields, wonderful project, 1.5 million. I've asked, but I haven't received a response. So let me just ask the question. Last year was the first year of use. After two fallow years, the town paid $143,000 to a third party to maintain and cut the fields. $15,000 to a third party to monitor the other third party. So $158,000 for effectively 10 acres of fields. And I guess we don't have someone at the DPW to monitor grass and fields. Those expenditures, I believe, are planned and have started or will start for next year. Outside contractors cost significantly more than DPW employees. The town also is paying $350 from outside contractor to plant those little 2-1/2-inch seedlings that you see with green bags around town. I could plant one of those in an hour. The same contractor, third party, being paid mass prevailing wages well in excess of what we would pay DPW employees is doing repairing storm drains. They do a nice job on those, but there's a lot of orange cones once again.
You got 20 seconds left to ask a question?
They also plant grass. So here's my question. Sorry. Is the DPW at full strength for employees? If not, and when? We've got a wage study that took two years. It's in the warrant to fund some of the things. But when will the DPW be at full strength? And then my second question is, what is the transition plan to eliminate the majority of the DPW on-demand duties that are costing in excess, well in excess of what we would pay DPW employees?
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Town Manager Lynn Simmons, please come to the front.
Thank you. The DPW is not at full staffing. As of earlier last week, there were 14 vacancies out of 36 within the union. And the question regarding when we would be not utilizing contractors anymore, I don't have a firm answer for that. We have struggled since just before the pandemic with staffing up the department. That has not alleviated at all. We did just wrap up a wage and classification study. I am in the middle of bargaining with the union related to that. But we still have over a dozen vacancies right now. So if we can fill those and we can reassess our workload after that and get people through their probationary period and have them stay with us, that'd be great. But that's just not the reality of what we've been dealing with the last few years.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Yes, you may.
I guess the fact that the Collins or Donahue study was two, over two years ago, it was a less-than-favorable review of the DPW. And one of its significant recommendations was a wage study for the DPW. Is it acceptable that a wage study has taken over two years and we're still negotiating that? And I realize you're, you know, no one would tell me, but how much more does it cost to have outside contractors rather than DPW employees? It's got to stop. And it shouldn't have taken two years for a wage study.
Are you asking about the, the wage study? Why has it taken two years?
Why did it take two years? In private, in the private sector, that would have taken-
Thank you.
Well, less than a year.
The wage study started in December of '22. It wrapped up in April, April 1. It was released. So it was less than two years. We were under contract with the Collins Center for that work. We were on track until the program or project manager that we had assigned to us left. And then the Collins Center needed to redistribute workload. So it definitely took a little bit longer than we had anticipated. But this is fairly common in wage studies. It was 90 positions that were evaluated.
Thank you.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. Looking for clarification. In the middle of Article 3, there's a phrase, I'm quoting, "to provide for a reserve fund." What is meant by that?
Mr. Cottington or the Reserve Fund? He wants to know what the Reserve Fund means?
The Water Enterprise, Sewer Enterprise, and Stormwater Enterprise have reserve funding. But what is meant "to provide for a reserve fund"?
I'll get you the answer in just a moment. Town Manager Simmons?
That's for the Operating Reserve Fund.
Any further questions? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With 214, yes, 25, no. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Mr. LaCusa, Article 4.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the following amounts or greater or lesser sum for capital projects that are, and that any remaining amounts from the capital projects be deposited into the Capital Stabilization Fund from raising appropriate fiscal year 2025. Project development, $105,000. Project reserve, $25,000. Chiller upgrades for the HVAC system of Wolf Swamp School, $700,000. Exterior wood and trim design upgrades to the police station, $30,000. Grounds lawnmower, one more, $94,400. Road paving, $747,250. For multi-funds, raise and appropriate fiscal year 2025 available funds in the Treasury, free cash, the General Town Government Computer Replacement of $73,000. And then I have $110,000. And maybe these just didn't print out correctly. So the General Town Government-
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the last item again, please?
So-
From multi-funds?
Basically, we were looking to raise and appropriate for the computer replacement, $73,000. And available funds in the Treasury in free cash is $110,000 for computer replacement. We also are looking to raise and appropriate 2025 from retained funds. Or no, I'm sorry. Raise and appropriate $161,000 for DPW truck replacement with plow. Water retained earnings, $161,000. Sewer retained earnings, $161,000. And stormwater earnings, $161,000.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Annually, the town appropriates funds for capital expenditures. The fiscal year 2025 capital plan is funded at 2.81% of the estimated general fund revenues less debt excusion taxation as allotted for in their capital funding policy.
Finance Committee recommendation? Ms. Wida?
Article 4 is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm sorry.
It's not on yet? There it goes. Larry Stardew, Williamsburg Drive. I just have a question. The $700,000 element for the chiller for the Wolf Swamp School, was consideration given for bonding that as opposed to paying for it in one year?
Town Manager?
Yes, it was. There was a lengthy discussion at a Select Board meeting on just that topic. And the decision was made to continue with it in the capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So regarding the capital-
Just get in the habit. Name and address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and address, please.
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. So we talked about the budget before, now the capital plan. You know, there were three long-budget meetings, significant effort, and a difficult process. Not just because of the funding of the literacy program, but overall, as someone just mentioned, you usually bond for capital expenditures. So it was a tough year. At different points, there was proposal to access the Operating Stabilization Fund, which would have violated Select Board rules for the purpose. It's like breaking your children's piggy bank to pay your bar bill. Discussions of changing the maturity of bond already issued. And as you see in the warrant, we're using retained earnings to fund water and sewer, so rates do not increase even more than they are. It's probably a good thing, but the budget's up 13.8%. Over the next five years, the town has large capital expenditure needs. Buildings, water, and sewer. Roads, there's the $15 million portion of Springfield's 370 million water filtration plant. And there's a new middle school, which will be costly, and I strongly support it. I also believe, as others do, the town is at a fiscal crossroads. The town needs a zero-based, five-year look-back budget forecast encompassing the General Fund, the School Fund, capital plan, the Town, School, water and sewer, and water and sewer operating costs, and the bonding capacity, resulting in projected tax and water and sewer rates. The town is an $86 million enterprise. It is a business. So I have two questions.
Thank you.
Made it under the bell. Does the town, overall, general fund and school, have the personnel and fiscal budget to prepare a five-year budget forecast in all the facets I mentioned by March 31, 2025 or earlier, which is before the next town meeting? Secondly, do the Select Board, Town Manager, Finance Committee, School Administration, and School Board commit to preparing such a five-year budget and forecast to present to the citizens by March 2025?
I'm going to allow the first question. The second question gets us beyond the scope of-
I knew that, but I had to try.
Yeah, well.
Go for it.
Points for trying. Town Manager, the question is, does the town have the fund to prepare for next year?
I would say we have the personnel to do whatever the directive the Select Board provides to me to carry out.
Thank you.
Follow-up?
Quick?
I would encourage the citizens that if they want to see what their tax rate and water and sewer rates are going to be for the next five years, and they will be going up for needed projects. But-
Thank you.
I would encourage you, email the Town Manager and Select Board so that they get it done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. The vote is now open on the motion under Article 4. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With 214, yes, 20, no. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article 5, Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $270,509.64 to fund the purchase of a new elementary literary curriculum.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This article is to support the one-time purchase of a high-quality elementary literacy curriculum. Our current curriculum has served us well, but has been in place for approximately 15 years. The new curriculum will be assigned with recent research, current pedagogy, and state standards, and will provide 110 students with instruction in core components of reading and writing. A comprehensive review of our current curriculum began in the 2023 school year and continued this year with over 30 elementary educators, field testing, and structural units from two high school quality programs. The School Committee is scheduled to receive a final administrative recommendation at its meeting on May 28. Authorizing the funds for this purpose enables the School Department to purchase the new curriculum and provide training to school teachers in advance of the 2024-25 school year.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Article 5 originally sought to appropriate $495,000. That has been taken down to $257,000, I believe, to purchase, to fund the purchase of a new elementary literacy curriculum. Updating the literacy curriculum had been planned for several years with the final selection being finalized this May. Knowing that this decision was in process, the School Committee did not bring this budget item forward until the very last meeting of the Select Committee to approve the final warrant for the spring 2024 meeting. Historically, curriculum has been funded within the school budget. The funds that were used to fund this are important capital commitments that we have made or have decided to make to both our retirement funds and to ongoing capital. Given the knowledge that the school- Given the knowledge that the school department had of the curriculum need during the budget cycle, the timing of the proposal, and the timing of the proposal, the finance committee did not feel that the town was given adequate opportunity to prioritize this expenditure against other budget priorities. Given these facts, a majority of the finance committee voted to not recommend this article.
Ms. Wida, was that at the larger number, not this particular, you didn't, did you take a vote on this particular number?
We didn't have time.
You just, can you just say that? Thanks.
The new number was not presented until last week, so we did not have time to vote on the new number.
Thank you.
Given our reasons for, I won't state what we would have said one way or the other, but it is somewhat of a last-minute thing.
And school committee recommendation, please? Mr. O'Shea, are you going to be speaking?
The school committee did vote on this on May 7th and recommends this motion.
I had previously recognized the superintendent, Martin O'Shea. He will give a brief presentation, and then we'll have floor open for discussion.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Marty O'Shea. I'm proud and happy to serve as your superintendent, and I thank the residents for the opportunity to consider raising and appropriating funds for the purchase of a new elementary literacy curriculum. And as I began, I want to thank the select board, town manager, for assisting us with this opportunity, and thank the school committee, and in particular, Mary Keen, who is the chair of the curriculum subcommittee, for providing key guidance and support and direction towards the adoption of this new elementary literacy curriculum. Also want to acknowledge our curriculum director, Dr. Beth Nelson, for shepherding this process since the beginning of the school year. So the, as, as an educator, we like to think about the why, the how, and the what. The why behind this is to develop an approach that reflects our current understanding of literacy acquisition skills. Our understanding in this area has evolved significantly in recent years. This adoption would allow us to transition from a balanced literacy approach to elementary literacy, to a structured literacy approach. This is arguably the most critical curriculum investment that we could make, as it is foundational to what we hope to, hope students will acquire during their time in Long Meadow Public Schools, and it's foundational to the work of our educators as well. To sort of provide a high-level explanation of this, this is really an opportunity for us to develop instructional practice that helps students learn how to understand, recognize, and decode words, and develop their reading comprehension and language comprehension skills in critical ways that are certainly needed nowadays. This, we believe, is critically important to help us be responsive to the needs of today's students, and residents, I'm sure, are aware that this is a direction that is in sync with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and in sync with some legislation that is making its way through the legislature as we speak. The how behind this adoption relates to the direction and oversight of the curriculum subcommittee back in March of 23. This was last academic year. We enlisted the support of an external partner to review our elementary literacy practices, and from that, we adopted a review and field test process that was kicked off in October of 23, that was this academic year. And I am so grateful to the 40-plus educators that spent a considerable amount of time field testing some programs for us and providing us with critical feedback to make an informed decision. Along the way, we were engaging the school committee and the curriculum subcommittee back in January, when our budget was first presented publicly. We had flagged this as an item that needed funding. It was, as some speakers have noted, a challenging budget year for the town of Long Meadow, but I was pleased that, to see on May 7th, that the school committee approved the adoption of a new elementary literacy curriculum. The what is that this would allow for the adoption of Amplify CKLA. It's a new elementary literacy curriculum for around 1,200 students in six grades, grades K through five. As noted earlier, this is a, would represent a one-time expenditure of 270,509 dollars and sixty-four cents. We do not anticipate that this would create any additional recurring costs that could not be covered by existing sources in our operational budget. This is a one-time cost that we're grateful for the opportunity to have it considered at town meeting. Specifically, this adoption would provide for classroom kits, student activity books, critical onsite professional development, and student and teacher access to digital resources, and the shipping and handling that would come with a considerable amount of resources that our teachers and students would benefit from. So thanks for the opportunity to present this to town meeting, and happy to answer any questions that residents might have.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion.
78 Farmington. Was the process to get here ideal? No. And I agree with the finance committee on that. I hope we don't see it again, but I'm speaking here in favor because I think this is such a critical thing for our kids. We are raising a generation of elementary school kids whose education and early development was greatly impacted by COVID. I know that because I have three of them, and who are having remote kindergarten and first grade and preschool. And all three of them piloted this program, and when kids are telling you it's a better program, you know it's right. I also have spoken to the school committee and educators, and this is a great program, and it's really vital that we replace this outdated program that we've been using, and we owe it to our kids. And our, Long Meadow is our schools, and our schools are Long Meadow. So please vote and support this measure. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Alice Dion, 12 Hillcrest Ave. I am a parent of a student who had the opportunity to take part in the new curriculum, and I would like to share my support. Over the course of the study, my child was excited to do her homework, proud of her independence and ability to explain what she had read through her own narration and illustration. It is up to us to provide our children with opportunities for growth, learning, and curiosity. This curriculum will do that. A curriculum is a tool that our teachers need to do their job and serve our students. Similar to the upgrades we vote yes on for the DPW, fire, police, and emergency response departments, our teachers and students have earned a yes vote through their hard work and dedication year after year. A yes vote will be impactful for both current and future students, ultimately bettering our local community. Also, let's purchase it now before it's 495,000 dollars.
Thank you. Yes.
38 Crescent Road. I'd just like to know what the teachers think about going through this whole new situation where they got to completely relearn how to teach, in this particular situation. I mean, are they all for this? Is this something that, what was wrong with the, with the originals curriculum?
Okay. Superintendent O'Shea?
We certainly solicited feedback from the 40-plus educators that were involved in the field test. I would say, it's safe to say that they were overwhelmingly in favor of adopting this particular program, and it's a heavy lift for them. We ask a lot of educators nowadays, but they're enthused and excited to move forward with this adoption. In terms of what was wrong with the, with the existing, I wouldn't say there was anything wrong, but I think it's really, this new approach is reflective of our new understandings of how students acquire literacy skills. I think our, our existing curriculum served us well. I think students' needs change, and we need to change along with those needs.
And can you mention some?
Follow-up question, Mr. Kozick?
Sorry.
Yep.
Can you give us an example of how they're not understanding things and, you know, how are these kids not getting it, I guess, you know? Is there some kind of real problem? I think our kids are doing just fine.
Superintendent O'Shea?
Sure. Certainly, our, our kids are doing well, and I'm proud of the results that, that we get. And I think this is a program that would help us reinforce the, the key pillars of literacy acquisition. It would promote their understanding of phonemic awareness, of phonics. It would help them develop as, as readers with great fluency and strong comprehension and strong vocabulary. And so I think it really is, this is, it's not an unusual thing for districts after a number of years to review, revise, and adopt a new curriculum. It's part of sort of a natural process, I'd say.
Okay. I'm going to ask the next person to speak.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. Just a simple question. So I see an amount of 270,000 dollars, 509, and then I see 1,100 students, but how many years will this new program be good for? So I'm trying to come up with a number. What is the cost per student per year? What's, is this good for another 10 years or 15 years? How many, how many years do you expect this new program to be effective?
Mr. O'Shea?
Yeah, typically, curriculum is in place for about six to eight years. I haven't done the math on what the cost would be per student, but remember that the resources we're securing are also resources for educators, for classroom teachers, for interventionists, and consumables for students. But I haven't, I haven't broken down, I don't have for you tonight, the cost per student. That is information we could get to.
Mr. Friedman, you can ask a follow-up. Go ahead.
And how many students per year would be part of the program?
Every elementary school student in grades K through five, so roughly 1,200 students each year.
Thank you. And I'm going to recognize the person behind you who hasn't not yet had a chance to speak on this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive. I can't really speak about whether this program is good or not, but I do question the process that was used. I had the honor of spending 17 years on the high school council. I retired when Larry Burdi retired. We retired together. And during that sentence, I mean, that service, one of the things that we tend to see, I was the parent representative originally, and then the community representative. One of the things that you all know is that we built a, a school without walls because it was the most acceptable thing to do at that point. We introduced a program when my son was in elementary school called Creative Spelling, which, for those of you who remember, was, we didn't correct their spelling because that would traumatize them. That was not long-term acceptable. I questioned the process that was used to do this, both in the bringing it to the town at the last minute, so that the financing of it was not really given the appropriate consideration as to what's the best way to finance it. And second, I'm concerned about the people who are involved in making decisions. They're of good faith, but they're all educators, and they're the ones who built the school without walls. I don't know, and if the superintendent would comment, were their parents involved in this? Were their community members involved in the study to look at whether or not this program, in fact, would be something that we would like to support in the long run? And again, I am concerned about both the content of the actual decision, there were two, maybe there's five, that should have been looked at, and also the method in which was brought to this meeting. Thank you.
So I'm going to address both of you. So you have two questions there, one about the process, and I would actually, Chair Schwanier, could I ask you to address the process question, the budgetary cycle? And then Superintendent O'Shea, the question about community members and parents, please.
Perfect. So the question about the process brings us into our curriculum review cycle and the timing of that curriculum review cycle. As Dr. O'Shea mentioned, we began this, well, we began this a little while ago, and in March of 2023, spent time reviewing the current literacy needs, which is the first step in any review process. Then by the fall, we were building a collection of curriculum possibilities and building a team for that review process. So it wasn't possible to begin field testing a curriculum until the early spring, and we had, at that point, narrowed down to two choices. There were multiple other choices at the beginning, and I would welcome anyone who wants to see a little bit more of that presentation. Our most recent school committee meeting had a whole review of all of the different programs and what determined the decision to move forward with those two. Two were field tested, and that field test didn't end until the end of April. So while that process seems fast or close to this, the process as a whole did involve town officials and did involve us continuing to communicate as a school department that this was a priority for us. We began speaking with town officials early in the winter about this being something that we'd like to make sure is included in this year's cycle because of the critical nature of making this curriculum change, both because of the needs of our students and because of the growing pressure from around the country to review literacy curriculum at an elementary level. So that process began early on this year, this calendar year, and ultimately, in an effort to make sure that our budget request stayed at the 3% requested by the select board, the decision was reached in, in connection with or in collaboration with town officials to put this as a separate warrant item, because adding a purchase this high to our budget would have pushed us over the 3% that we were requested to keep our budget within, and this still is a critical need. So having to wait out another year using curriculum that we know is not meeting the needs of our students so that we can try and get piecemeal into the budget over the years was not an adequate choice for us, which is why we brought this forward as a separate warrant article, since it is a one-time expense and a critical expense for our students.
Superintendent O'Shea, could you please address the second question?
I think there's an enormous amount of public support, both locally, statewide, and across the nation, for districts to adopt evidence-based, science-based approaches to elementary literacy. I think what's, one of the good things that's changed in recent years is that the state has gotten serious about, about requiring districts to adopt evidence-based practices. So there's a, Curate is a entity within the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that vets curriculums, so the curriculum that we have identified has been vetted and approved by, by DESI. There is another national organization called EdReports that has also vetted and approved this. Locally, we did receive an enormous amount of positive feedback from, from parents in the district who, who saw the, the connection between our program and the core knowledge that we're trying to build up in students. And so students were, we heard many, many reports of students going home, sharing the interesting literature that was before them in class every day. I can't say that this was a community decision, but certainly there's a lot of impetus locally and statewide to, to move us in this direction.
Thank you. At the green microphone, please.
Hi, Julie Morgan, 65 Long Meadow Street. I'm also a member of the school committee. I just want to underscore some of the points that Dr. O'Shea and Nicole have made about this switch. I think we should, make no mistake, we need to make this switch this year. As Dr. O'Shea just said, we're switching to an evidence-based curriculum, one that we know will help all of our students learn to read. And as he also said, part of the reason for this switch was the feedback that we are getting of concerns from both school committee members and members of the community about the level of education that their kids were able to get in our schools. I also wanted to underscore the point that Dr. O'Shea made about the teachers who piloted the curriculum. Our elementary school teachers just went through another curriculum change, and they still opted to help pilot. I think we had, like, you know, people raising their hand, like, all over the place, raising their hands to help us pilot a new curriculum. I think it speaks to the strength of the conviction among teachers that we need this kind of change. My daughter participated in the, in the pilot in her third-grade classroom. To the question about whether we're hearing from parents, we're hearing from them tonight. We've heard from Josh, we've heard from another parent. I'm here to say, it's been remarkable to have my daughter come home and talk about what she's learning in her reading curriculum. That's not, reading curriculum are not words that you usually hear coming home from third grade students. I drove my daughter and one of her friends home from track practice just tonight. They were reading to one another from the books, from this reading curriculum, because they find the stories so interesting and are not even realizing that they're learning and connecting concepts as they go. And I just also want to point out that if we don't adopt this curriculum, we're going to pay for it one way or another. We're going to pay for it in the special intervention services and special education services to help students deal with the gaps that we have in the current curriculum we. use. So I encourage you all to vote for this article.
Thank you. Yes?
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. I, I support this warrant article. And following up on the superintendent's numbers, it comes out to about $27 a year per student. I think that's a bargain. I attended grades K through 12 in this town. My son's attended grades K through 12 in this town. My oldest son is a professor of biomedical engineering at Harvard University. He did really well at Long Meadow. So we need to give our children every opportunity that we can afford to give them, to give them the best possible education. Please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Benjamin Lipham, 302 Blueberry Hill. So I have a quick question for the educators. Educate me a bit. Just trying to get an idea as to what statistical advantages we have here. Are we getting, learning how to read quicker, you know, that type of a thing? Is that what we're talking about, or a greater depth of knowledge as they learn? What's the, I heard there's stories that are being taught. I've just been trying to get an idea as to what, what we're voting on.
Is it Superintendent O'Shea, or is this a school committee member would like to speak to this? No, no, no. You provided me answer. Yep. Just name and address.
Michaela Fitzgerald, 275 Burbank Road. I'm on the school committee and also on the curriculum subcommittee, and I've been involved in this process. I'm also an educator of early literacy and elementary literacy with over 15 years' experience. I taught in Springfield when they adopted new curriculum that's based in the science of reading and saw firsthand how accelerated the, and targeted the instruction is. And something else that I want to point out is it's not just reading curriculum. Literacy includes speaking, listening, and writing, and that the kids that just piloted this program within three weeks were, my son in first grade was writing complete sentences on his own. And those are other important components that this curriculum addresses.
All right. Thank you. Yes, at the green mic?
Jamie Hench, 40 East M Lane. I just wanted to jump up, being a member of the school committee, because I thought that the beginning of the comments were fairly misleading. I can't speak to ELA. The experts speak to that. But from a financial standpoint, I sat in, I think we were at nine, basically slide decks of 40 separate slides, nine separate times, with Dr. O'Shea. Being on the finance subcommittee, the school committee, we met with the select board, we met with everybody. He went through all those. This was on there every single time. So it was never put as part of the budget, because I think everybody here realizes that if you look at your family finances, we were dealing with the same thing. We had energy bills through the roof. We had $31 million of our school budget as employees. Guess what? We were, we were dealing with that. So we were coming back to the town and trying to be fiscally responsible. We excluded that as part of the budget, but it was on our budget slides that I watched, I can't even tell you how many times, and it was a ridiculous amount of slides that he went through. You can go view that on video, that it was brought up on there. It was excluded as part of that because we thought, as a school committee, that it wasn't appropriate to put that apart of there, given the constraints of the town at this point in time. You know, that's the same school committee that during the pandemic gave a million dollars back to the town because we thought it was appropriate. So we always had this apart of here. We just didn't think to put it in the budget because we didn't think it was appropriate. It was needed, but wasn't appropriate. So just to clarify, truly, it has been a part of our discussions, a part of our really detailed planning on the school committee. So it wasn't something we were missing or an end of the term where we threw this in here. It was something that was very much needed, heard by the teachers, that was pushed by us at a time when we didn't have the funds to do it for the kids. So just to clarify from the beginning of that meeting, so everybody understands that this wasn't the school committee trying to pull something, it was part of the planning for the last year.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Press one for yes, press two for no. The vote is now open. The vote is now closed. With 2:15, yes, 45, excuse me, with 2:15, yes, 45, no, the motion passes. Majority affirmative vote.
Madam Moderator, is the consent agenda we talked about in order to now?
If you would like to make a motion, you can make a motion.
Okay, yes. I then, I move that Articles 6 through 18, all approved by the finance committee, be considered as a consent agenda. Articles 6 through 18.
The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak, speak to it briefly if you wish. Because I'd like to, I'd like to address the folks who are leaving the meeting, to try to do so as quietly as possible so that those remaining can understand what is happening here.
Okay. Items 6 through 18 appear to be all non-controversial items. All have been approved by the consent, by the finance committee. And with, with that group being handled as a consent agenda and a couple of other recommendations we'll be making, we'll probably cut about two hours out of this meeting if people would like to do that. Obviously, anybody can call any of those single items up when we run a consent agenda.
So the way that this motion will work is, you're familiar with consent agendas normally. On the way in, you were given a consent agenda that was handed out by town officials. Mr. Starr is making his own motion for a consent agenda that incorporates more articles than what the town had originally included in a consent agenda. And what this means, as Mr. Starr had said, is if we are, what I will do is I will read each number of the articles. If anybody wishes to hold that article for separate consideration and discussion, we can do so. And the balance of those articles, we will vote on as a block. So if you hear a number that you want to address separately, call out hold. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Seventeen. Eighteen. Hearing none, held separately, we will come to a vote on a motion to approve all of those articles, 6 through 18, as one. You ready? The vote, the vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. The vote is now closed. With 1:98, yes, eight, no, the motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Motion to approve 6 through 18, call them all out.
18 requires a two-thirds. So you just have to declare a two-thirds.
As a note, Article 18 required a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds vote is so declared. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Jacobilsky, 120 York Drive. Just wanted to ask why we didn't vote on Articles 19 and 20 alongside the others. So to repeat, just asking why we didn't vote on Articles 19 and 20 with the previous articles, given 18 seems to amend Articles 19 and 20. So I'm wondering what the, I understand that it wasn't included in the motion, but what is the reasoning to separate Articles 19 and 20 from the others?
It was Mr. Starr's, or the previous speaker's prerogative. Ms. Hinoaki?
Madam Moderator, I move that, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,648,649.77 to pay costs of the Bliss Park Playground renovation project, so-called, for the purpose of renovating public playgrounds, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, which will be undertaken in coordination with a reimbursement grant from the Land and Water Fund Conservation Grant Program under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act, Public Law 88578, 78, statute 897, and to determine whether this amount shall be raised by borrowing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or otherwise.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
No amounts shall be borrowed or expended hereunder until the select board has determined that the town has received a grant commitment for this project from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The Land and Water Conservation Fund is a 50-50 matching grant, meaning that if awarded, the grant will cover 50% of the total project cost. The total project cost is estimated at $1,648,649.77. The amount authorized to be borrowed hereunder shall be reduced to the extent of any grants that the town shall receive on account of this project. The Bliss Park Playground was selected for this grant proposal due to its conditions ranking in the Long Meadow Active Recreation Conditions Assessment and Strategic Plan, and because it is the town's most popular playground located outside of school grounds.
Finance committee recommendation, please. Ms. Wita?
Finance committee recommends Article 19.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 19?
Summer, 57 Farmington Avenue. And I have a question just about the timing of this project in regards to the timing of the Bliss Laurel planning process. I'm just wondering how this fits into that, you know, which comes, will you have, like, at least a conceptual plan before any of these renovations get done? How that'll work, how they'll work together?
Ms. Simmons?
Sure. We are not entirely certain that the projects are going to line up. However, they are outside the scope of each other. So this playground project specifically is in the playground footprint and is not within the bounds of the Cooley Brook work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will come directly to a vote on the motion on Article 19. The vote is now open. This requires a two-thirds vote. The vote is now closed. With 1:72, yes, 26, no, I declare two-thirds vote has been achieved in favor. I see Mr. Starr standing there before you. Mr. Gold?
Thank you. The next consent agenda possibility, move that Articles 20 through 26, all approved by the finance committee, except 26, which is required by the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act, be considered as a consent agenda. The first four, 20 through 24, are Community Preservation Act articles that-
Hold on, hold on.
Yep.
The motion is Articles 20 to 26?
Correct.
Be considered as part of a consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Did you want to say something now? Okay.
Yeah, 20 through 24 are Community Preservation Act items, which appear to be all non-contentious. And 25 and 26 are requirements that we need to adjust in order to comply with the government, the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act. All have been approved by the finance committee.
No further discussion. So this is Articles 20 through 26. I'm going to call out each number. Call out hold if you would like to have separate discussion and vote on that article. Article 20. 21. 23. 25. Yes, sir? Are you calling out hold? You raised your hand. Are you calling out hold or no?
I'm not hold. I'm four.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm four.
Got it. Okay. We will vote on a motion to approve Articles 20 through 26 inclusive. This is the simple majority, correct?
Yes.
This requires a simple majority vote. The vote is now open. The vote is now closed. The motion passes 1:72, yes, to 9, no. Article 27. Mr. Gold?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and to maintain, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164 of the General Laws, and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plant for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth, including, without limitation, the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Gold?
Yes. This article is the first of two necessary votes to allow the town to create a municipal light plant. An MLP gives the town improved bonding opportunities when building a fiber optics or broadband network, and allows for the town to expand broadband-based services to residents and businesses. A fiber optic network is necessary for the town's schools and municipal government to be able to reliably provide modern technology-based services. The adoption of this warrant article does not obligate the town or its residents to develop or approve a municipal broadband network.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority?
No.
There is further discussion?
No, two-thirds.
Oh, forgive me.
Two-thirds.
I apologize. It is a two-thirds vote that's required. 27. I didn't think it was. I thought it was simple. Yep, there it is. Yep. That's correct. It is two-thirds. Forgive me. The vote is now open. It requires two-thirds. No, it's not open yet. Oh, boy. We had to run into a glitch. I'm sorry. Now it's open. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With 1:69, yes, to 6, no, the motion passes with a two-third majority. Vote. Affirmative. Goodness gracious. Article 28. Mr. Gold?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 from the Long Meadow Peg Access- the Long Meadow Peg Access and Cable Related Fund for fiscal year 2025 cable-related purposes consistent with the town's 2021 to 2031 cable license franchise agreement.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
With the acceptance of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F three-quarters, by vote of Article twenty-six at the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three Annual Town Meeting, incoming revenues related to the town's cable license franchise agreement will be deposited in this account and can be only... and can only be expended by vote of the town meeting authorizing such. This appropriation will be used in accordance with the statute and the town's 2021 to 2023 cable license franchise agreement, including but not limited to, one, support of public educational or government-access cable television services; two, monitor compliance of the cable operator with the franchise agreement; or three, prepare for the renewal of the franchise agreement.
Finance Committee recommendation, please. Ms. Weeta?
Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-eight.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article twenty-eighth's motion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With one forty-eight yes to nine no, the motion passes with a majority affirmative vote. Mr. Gold, Mr. Starr was there before you. Mr. Starr?
Eighty-one Williamsburg Drive. My last consent agenda. I move that Articles twenty-nine through thirty-one, all approved by the Finance Committee, be considered as a consent agenda.
The motion has been made and seconded. Do you want to speak to it or...?
Same answer before. These are non-contemptious.
So, folks, I'm going to call out Articles... each of the Articles. Call out "hold" if you wish to have separate consideration for any of the Articles. Twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. We shall come directly to a vote on a motion to approve Articles twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one as a consent agenda. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. The vote is now closed. With one forty-nine yes, seven no, the motion passes. Majority affirmative vote.
And with that, I'd just like to say twenty-three out of the thirty-six warrant articles were passed with consent agenda, and we probably saved about two hours of this meeting. So thank you all for participating.
Mr. Zurco?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt changes to Chapter three fifteen, Article nine, signed regulations of the zoning bylaw as written in the warrant.
You may speak... Motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Zurco.
In its original form, Article six, Section three fifteen dash thirty-nine B special permit procedure erroneously states that the ZBA is the SPGA for the whole zoning code. The Planning Board is already identified as an SPGA in Section three fifteen dash four. Definitions and throughout various locations in the zoning code for specific uses.
Planning Board recommendation, please?
The Planning Board recommends Article thirty-two.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Oh, pardon me. There is somebody coming. Okay, the vote... we're not voting now. Vote is closed. This is not... that's... we're not voting on this right now. We have a speaker. Yes, sir?
Just a simple question. Does this affect my signage from posting as a registered professional engineer at my door? Yes or no?
I don't know, but I'll find out. Town manager?
Corinne.
Corinne, would you note this? I'm going to ask Corinne Weisemans.
Corinne Weisemans, Assistant Town Manager and Director of Planning. I'm sorry, I did not hear the question. You weren't speaking close enough to the microphone.
Does this proposed warrant article affect...?
Speak closer to the microphone, please.
Does this... does this proposed warrant article affect my ability to post signage that I have as a registered professional engineer?
No. The standards of the sign bylaws have not changed in any way. The only thing that has been revised through this multi-page revision that you're looking at is removal of redundant language between general bylaw regarding signs and the zoning bylaw regarding signs, and then also reorganizing some of the standards to more appropriately fit into the appropriate section of the sign regulations bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Dan, you talking or no? Okay, just making sure. The vote is now open. Two-thirds vote required. And the vote is now closed. With one forty-six yes, seven no, the motion passes with a two-thirds majority affirmative vote, as declared. Article thirty-three.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt changes to Article six, Section three fifteen dash thirty-nine B special permit procedure of the zoning bylaw as written in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
In its original form, Article six, Section three fifteen dash thirty-nine B special permit procedure erroneously states that the ZBA is the SPGA for the whole zoning code. The Planning Board is already identified as an SPGA in Section three fifteen dash four. Definitions and throughout various locations in the zoning code for specific uses.
Planning Board recommendation, please, Mr. Bell?
The Planning Board recommends Article thirty-three.
Any further discussion on the motion under Article thirty-three? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Vote is Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With one fifty yes, four no, the motion passes with a two-thirds majority affirmative vote by declaration. Article thirty-four. Mr. Zurco?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt changes to General Bylaw, Section two forty-two, signs, billboards, and other advertising devices as written in the warrant.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The proposed revisions to General Bylaw, Section two forty-two, signs, billboards, and other advertising devices will rectify redundancy and conflict between General Bylaws, Section two forty-two, signs, billboards, and other advertising devices, and Article nine of the zoning bylaw. General Bylaw, Section two forty-two, repeats some of the regulations from Article nine and has additional regulations that qualify some of the regulations and/or procedure spelled out in Article nine. Finally, several clauses in Section two forty-two are unintelligible, leaving interpretation of the code difficult or impossible. For a petitioner attempting to apply for a sign permit, the connection between the two bylaws would be confusing. The majority of these revisions are to move elements from the general bylaw, Section two forty-two, into Article nine of the zoning bylaw, so that there is only one bylaw governing signs.
Further discussion? Yes.
Alex Grant, Westmoreland Avenue. My question is, has this been reviewed by Town Council? I say that because there's a Supreme Court case from a few years ago that basically made all sign regulation suspect on... when it comes to the content of signs. And as I read even the current proposal, we would be doing that. If you take a look at some of the language, it talks about what kinds of issues and what kind of content you can have on the signs. So I was just wondering if Town Council had opined on the constitutionality of this proposed language.
Prior to town meeting, Town Council reviews all of the proposed actions on the warrant, and if there is any question or concern, the Town Council raises those.
Okay. Could... is there anybody here to speak to the specific issue that I raised about the Supreme Court decision that-
I understand.
...made all of that suspect?
I will ask Town Council, Jay Tellerman, to come to the microphone, please.
Thank you. This was an issue that was discussed when we were working on this. The changes, the... some of the issues, I will concede readily, and the AG would note upon their review of this, that there are provisions in here that if enforced against someone who chose not to obey, there could be problems with enforcement. The position of the Attorney General is that they wouldn't necessarily disapprove it, but admonish a town that had some of the provisions in there with respect to the political signs. That said, this bylaw doesn't change the existing ones, so there are no new provisions. The existing bylaw contains provisions regarding political signs, and those weren't changed. So there was no effort to get rid of what is already here. If I had to opine on the enforceability of some of these provisions to the Building Commissioner in and around a political season, I might have an opinion on whether or not he could enforce them, but it was a decision made not to change what is already existing in the bylaw.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
May I speak to the... to take a position on it?
Yes.
So, given that, and my own understanding of the law on this subject, I would be voting against. If we're not prepared to enforce this, I don't know why we would have it on the books. And a particular concern under First Amendment law is the chilling effect of a law that maybe even if it isn't enforced, it would deter somebody from engaging in constitutionally protected speech. And I doubt that the town would want to engage in that kind of litigation, which is possible, because somebody could bring a suit because... for precisely the reason why I just stated.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. And the vote is now closed. With one thirty yes and thirty-two no, the motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Mr. Zurco, Article thirty-five.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt changes to Chapter two ninety-five, Article three of the Code of the Town of Long Meadow, illicit connections and discharges to storm drain system as written in the warrant.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Section two ninety-five dash thirty-eight B one D as currently written is contradictory. This article removes extraneous language and fixes the language to read as intended.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. The vote is now closed. One fifty yes to no, the motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. William Welch, twenty-five Meadowbrook Road.
Speak right into the microphone, please.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to transfer sixty-six thousand from the Building Maintenance Utilities Account, number zero one one nine two zero zero two dash five two two zero zero zero, to fund a feasibility report to study and recommend a strategic plan, including design and an assessment of the continued viability of a grass field versus artificial turf, to renovate the Long Meadow High School Stadium. The plan... the recommended plan shall consider and incorporate public feedback from open public sessions.
The motion has been made and seconded, and I want to note, earlier in the evening, I had indicated that sometimes motions differ slightly from the article. This is one of those cases in which the article has been made more specific by the addition of a dollar amount and a funding source. Mr. Welch, you may speak to it.
Thank you. I want to tell you why this article is important, and I want to tell you why I proceeded the way I did, meaning via a citizen's petition. I want to clarify and make clear that this article is not about grass versus artificial turf. It is about a strategic plan with respect to the high school stadium. And I want to tell you why I'm here doing it this way. So number one, I elected to choose a citizen's petition because it's my right. I get to do that. But the other reason why I wanted to proceed like this is I didn't want anyone speaking for me or filtering the explanation as to why we need this. I wanted to talk to you, one-on-one, as to how important this is. And I don't appear here personally. I appear here on behalf of the thousand kids who every year are going through high school and youth recreation programs, whether it's Mr. Grant's highly successful youth track-
Please refer... no names, thanks.
Whether it's the very highly successful youth track program that has over two hundred kids participating this spring, whether it's youth football, high school football, or soccer. This is why we need to have a strategic plan and to fund the strategic plan. Number one, the track currently at the high school has an end of life of two to three years. It was two to three years, six months ago. It's probably down now more towards two. That means in about two years, we have to replace the track. There really isn't much debate about that. You can ask the town manager, Parks and Rec. They will tell you the same thing. Once the track needs to be replaced, then it calls into question the stadium. Once you replace the track, number one, it's highly likely- Once you replace the track, number one, it's highly likely you would lose the ADA exemption under the grandfathering provision, given the amount of work that the track will require. But even if that's not the case, I want to tell you what the stadium is like. First of all, it is not ADA compliant. And I can tell you what I personally see every Saturday or every Friday when I go to a game, lacrosse, track, or football. This is what I see. If you are handicapped, if you are confined, for example, to a wheelchair, there's nowhere to park. You have to park in the handicap zone in the back of the high school because there's only one entrance for you. You don't get in to the north side, you have to go through the south side. It's about a tenth of a mile. When you get into the stadium, you don't get to sit with the fans. That's because the stadium is not ADA compliant. Instead, you're relegated to watching the game behind a chain link fence at about the 20 or 10-yard line. While others can watch it unobstructed, that's your vantage point. So you don't get to sit with your family if they choose to be in the stands. You don't get to be one of the fans shouting for the home team. Instead, you're relegated down behind the chain link fence at the 20 or 10-yard mark. I saw a Friday night at the lacrosse game that they brought someone inside onto the track at about the 50-yard line. That put that person in a pretty precarious position, given that a lacrosse ball shoots around that field at 30, 40, 50 miles an hour. I know these things because I coach youth football. Those games are like community events. There's grandparents, there's young kids, there's aunts, there's uncles. And it breaks my heart to see what I see. It is sad, and it's outrageous, and it's 2024. That population deserves better. But that's not the only reason why I'm here. I think those two should be sufficient. But the other reason is because I am telling you that there is a crisis on the fields, particularly at the high school and the middle school levels. The middle school fields are so bad that, for example, youth football graciously, from Parks and Rec and from the school department, allow us to play there on Saturday and Saturday nights. There were 37 games this fall that were played on that high school field. Youth football, high school football, boys' soccer, girls' soccer. That usage is not sustainable, and we need to figure it out. We cannot continue to kick the can down the road. The fourth reason why we need a strategic plan to figure out what to do with the field is because the field is not even usable by all. So I'm going to give you the example of, say, someone, could be male, could be female, who is on the field hockey team. From third grade all the way through high school, they will never be allowed to use that field because that field does not qualify under MIA rules for field hockey. So can you imagine that you are on that 2022 state championship team, and you never get to play in the stadium? You never get to have a playoff game there because the field is not eligible or does not qualify for field hockey play? And the last reason why we need to have the strategic plan to fund it and not to continue to kick the can down the road is because the town has already, through the townwide survey, identified that the rehabilitation or the renovation of the high school field is a need. It is something that you paid for through the survey. It was a need that came out through the survey. And today, I'm up here to tell you that on behalf of the thousand kids, the parents, the grandparents, we need to do something. We cannot continue to wait every six months. So I'm asking for your vote to approve Article 36. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the Finance Committee recommendation. Did you have one at your meeting?
Given the last-minute funding decisions and the last-minute matter of this request, we really didn't feel like we had time to have a valid opinion about it. We also had some real conflicts of interest on the Finance Committee. So the Finance Committee did not recommend this warrant.
At the, I don't know who is there first. Was it question or opposed? Mr.?
I just have it. Hello? Yes. Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg. Just a clarifying question. Again, the dollar amount involved, how was that determined? And can you give us a little more explanation of where the money is coming from for that survey? I think the survey is a good idea, but I would like to know the dollar amount again and where it's coming from.
Mr. Welch?
Identified source.
I can address the second question. I feel like the town manager would be best in terms of the funding, the $66,000. So I personally have gone out and gotten at least one or two quotes. Mr. O'Shea went out and informally got a quote. The quotes are coming back at the $60,000, $65,000 range. I believe the town manager, or I should say, the head of DPW also obtained a quote in the $60,000 to $65,000 range for the feasibility report or its cost. I will say that my understanding is that the town feels like they can actually get a feasibility report for less, but that's why the $66,000 figure appears in Article 36. As to the actual source of funds, how those were identified, I'm going to defer to the town manager.
So did you, but did you, did you approach, how did you go about getting the source?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So my particular source, or where I went, I actually contacted an entity that actually, you know, does this sort of work. And I think the town manager can speak to who she or DPW may have contacted.
Town manager?
Can I clarify the question? Is it?
Yeah.
How we identified the funding source or how we identified the amount?
I, I wasn't sure. Mr. Starr, is the question about the funding source, what, the private source? Or is it about the town source, the Building Maintenance Utilities Account Number da-da-da-da?
Yeah, it's the question, where is the money coming out of? What account?
That part, okay. Town manager?
The money is coming from the Building Maintenance Utilities Line. DPW, as we're closing, getting close to closing out fiscal year '24, they've been analyzing what's remaining in accounts, and this account was shown to have enough funding to cover this study.
Thank you. At the red mic?
My name is Alex Grant, Westmoreland Avenue. I've been the coordinator of the Long Meadow Youth Track Program since 2016. I was surprised to hear this proposal being described as something that was supposed to be for track and field because I only recently became aware of it. My concern with this proposal is that it could make worse what is currently our greatest challenge, which is access to the track. There's one track in town, and we already get bumped quite a bit by other sports from that track. In terms of priority, we are in last place, and it's hard. To the extent that you have a turf field that is being constantly used by other sports, which is the whole point of having a turf field, I think youth track is going to get bumped more and more, and I fear that our access to the track will get smaller and smaller, to the point where we almost never are on the track and we can't survive as a program. This program serves over 200 kids in the spring, and there's nowhere else to go in the Springfield area for youth track. Wilberham has a more limited program, and that's it. If Long Meadow's program does not survive, there is no youth track, and there's no place to go. Period. We don't need, youth track does not need a turf field. We don't need eight lanes. Six is just fine. We just need access to the track that we have and for the track to be resurfaced when it comes due. In Amherst, they have tried to upgrade their track to eight lanes and to have a new and improved facility. The result is that they have been stuck for years with no track at all. And that's my concern about an ambitious project like this, us having no track at all, no program, and basically making the perfect the enemy of the good.
Thank you. Next.
Morrie Garrett, 173 Morningside Drive. There was, I just wanted to first address the issue of there being a conflict of interest on the Finance Committee that addresses two members, myself being one of those, as a member of Long Meadow Football, coach, as well as the board, and running the youth football program. So what I wanted to just say for the benefit of the folks assembled here today is that the members of the Finance Committee who are, again, including myself, are involved in the football program here in Long Meadow abstained from the vote, so there was no conflict of interest. The second anecdotal piece that I wanted to add in favor of this is working with the youth football program. The primary practice, or the only, the practice facility is the fields in front of Williams. The, to put it mildly, the fields and Williams are suboptimal in terms of practice and play for the youth program. So when the youth program plays their games, we utilize the high school football field. The youth program has, last year, five squads running, five different age, five, eight, three age groups for a total of five different teams, potentially six. And with those five teams, the kids that were in the JV program were not permitted to use the high school field for the majority of the season because of the ongoing drainage issues at the high school. The difference between the kids being able to use, or the youth program being able to use, the high school field versus having to play a game at Williams, just in terms of the attendance and fundraising, it's night and day. It creates a substantial detriment to the fundraising efforts of the youth program to be denied access to the high school. And we were denied access to the high school for our younger kids for almost the entirety of the past 23 season, 2023 season, again, for our JV programs, because of the condition of the grass field. The feeling was that adding those additional games would create too much damage for the high school to then conduct their games in a safe and productive manner. So having a study done to determine what can be done to improve the situation at the high school field is critical, not just for the high school, but also for the youth program, in particular, the youth football program in Long Meadow.
Thank you. At the green mic?
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. Surprisingly, I'm over here in the green. I highly support turf field at the high school. I had two daughters that played field hockey. As the petitioner mentioned earlier, competitive disadvantage with any other school they played in Western Massachusetts or the state. They actually rent turf time before the playoffs. Long Meadow is probably, to my knowledge, the only school in Western Massachusetts that does not have a turf field. You go to Weston, they have two. You go to Wilton, Connecticut, they have three. It's needed, there's no question. What is interesting, though, is the process. April 2nd, the Finance Committee met, and the discussion was that there was no money in the budget. That was, what, five weeks ago? And the petitioner was going to use free cash in November. 20 minutes before this meeting started, there was a Finance Committee meeting out there because low and behold, $66,000 was found. I don't know where it was. In fact, I don't know where it was on April 1st, when the, one of the reasons the recycling center didn't open is that there was no money in the budget. Look, I'm going to take the high road. I'm not so sure the process was good here, and I will vote for it, but I will also say, you heard me say earlier about a five-year full budget, capex, tax rate, everything else. This is one of the things that should figure into it.
Thank you.
It should be done in steps, with a large portion of the field funded by private contributions like Minnichog did. But I'm in favor of it. But remember, it should go in that five-year budget, so you know what your tax rate and your water and sewer rates are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. At the yellow microphone, yes.
Hello, Steve Krieman, 24 Tabor Grossing. I simply have a quick question, and that is, how long will it take to complete this study?
Okay.
So again, I'll defer for more specifics to the town manager. However, like any, any procurement, it's going to go through the procurement process. It'll go out for bid. Obviously, I, the town, hopes for the best price possible. And I believe that from the individual or individuals that I talked to, the feasibility study would take anywhere from three to six months. And that would include the process that includes the public feedback sessions, so that everybody can provide their input on what is the best path forward, where we have a critical timeline that is quickly approaching.
Thank you. Next.
Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane. I have long been an advocate of the ADA regulations that went into effect in 1990. That's 35 years ago. When, when I was the major petitioner for the new adult center, it was one of the issues as we examined all of the vacant land, buildings, et cetera, across the town, discovered that there was very little ADA compliance for our handicapped residents. I am going to vote in favor of this primarily because of that. 35 years is long enough, certainly with our aging demographic here in Long Meadow and across the country, actually. We do need to make accommodations for those people who are handicapped and unable to participate in activities that all of the other residents can participate, even if it's just one person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I just want to point out, this is our Citizen of the Year
Mr. Starr?
who was not here earlier because he was at the adult center running an event.
Ms. Bergeron, stay after the meeting. We're going to give you your certificate. Any further discussion? Are we ready to come to a vote? All right. Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. The vote is now open. This requires a simple majority. Five more seconds. The vote is now closed. The motion passes, 128 to 38. The motion passes, 128 to 38. Article 37.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I move to take no action on Articles 37 and 38.
I'm going to ask you to make one motion, so one motion on each article, please, so we can have one vote for each.
Okay. So at this time, I move to take no action on Article 37.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to the motion to take no action.
Proposed warrant Article 37 received wonderful feedback from our volunteer and professional town officials over the last few weeks, including the Long Meadow Fire Department, the safety officer, the planning board, and the building department. To incorporate some recommended changes to the proposed warrant article would be complex due to the highly diagrammatic character of the subject, warrant article, and the complexity of seeking amendments from the floor for this, for this meeting. Although I do expect to give a revised articles in the near future for future town meetings, at this time, I would like to essentially pause to allow the warrant article to be upgraded so it better meets the needs of our community.
Any further discussion on the motion to take no action on Article 37? Seeing none, we will come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Five seconds. The vote is now closed. With 119 yes, 12 no, the motion to take no action has been affirmed. Let the record show, no affirmative action has been taken on this article. Article 38, Mr. Friedman?
Once again, I move to take no action on Article 38.
Is there a second?
The same reasoning, based on the feedback from our local town officials-
Yep.
...and some recommended upgrades to the article. I do plan to come back in the near future with revised versions of this, but at this time, to better meet the needs of our community-
Could you speak closer to the microphone?
But at this time, to meet, better meet the needs of the community, I'm recommending that we pause and take no action on this measure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion to take no action on Article 38. The vote is now open. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With 111 yes, 6 no, the motion to take no action has been approved. Well, nope, nope, nope. Before we get to a motion to dissolve, I would like to call Mary Beth Bergeron to the front to receive her certificate for Citizen of the Year. Thank you. I think Mr. Gold had the right motion. Motion to dissolve the annual town meeting of 2024. I heard a second. I think we're going to skip discussion. All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, unanimous affirmative vote. Meeting is dissolved. Thank you, folks. Have a great evening.
I should leave this open to see how many people decide to go on their way out.
Yep.